Good evening. It's seven o'clock and I would like to call our City Council to session this evening. I have a little bit of an unusual date here, but glad those of you that were able to follow that and make sure you attended tonight. And our next session will not be until the usual fourth Tuesday of the month, so any that have an interest, again, we'll not have our meeting on the second Tuesday of the month. This will be our only one in the first half of the month and then back to the fourth Tuesday for our next meeting this month. We did not have any closed session tonight, so nothing to report there. And I'd like to ask our Madam Clerk to have a roll call, please.
Councilman Ziprick.
Present.
Councilman Peterson.
Present.
Councilman Polpesku.
Present.
Mayor Brower.
Here.
And I understand Mayor Protim Riggsby is planning on attending. He's running a little late. We do have a quorum.
Mayor Protim Riggsby was scheduled for invocation and pledge of allegiance, but I will go ahead and lead in that since he's not able to make it yet. Would you please stand with me for the invocation? Dear Father in heaven, we thank you for this opportunity to get together as citizens of the city of Loma Linda. We thank you for your promises to guide us if we ask you to, which we are invoking you with your spirit and wisdom this evening. Thank you for being with us and guiding the city in our deliberations and actions tonight. Amen. And pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Thank you. This is the portion of the agenda for oral reports and any non-agenda items from the public. If you have any items you would like to bring to our attention, we can't act on them tonight since they're not formally listed, but now is the opportunity for non-agenda items. Anyone with any items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to next issue, conflict of interest. Everyone will deal with that as it should arise. The next item is exciting and sad, too. It's quite a privilege to honor someone tonight who's been longstanding, very valuable member of our community, and that individual is Mr. Bob Loader. And would you please come up to the podium, Bob? And, you know, Bob's been extremely active in this community for many a year, has lived here for many a year. He's provided very valuable leadership in the medical center and the clinical lab and other areas, and then has been involved with city activities for, I think, longer than probably just about any of us up here, except maybe the exception of Floyd. I don't know. But it's, he's been a member of many committees. The one that I think been on the longest has been the Traffic Advisory Committee, but then numerous other ones that you've been a participant in as well. So as just a small token of recognition for your service, I have a plaque that I'll just at least read. And in fact, yeah, here is the date eighty-two to two thousand nine, so I think that even predates you there, Floyd.
Way beyond me.
I've seen a lot of you guys come and go.
So anyway, just literally reads Robert Loader in recognition of community service, Traffic Advisory Committee, July nineteen eighty-two to June two thousand nine. And again, we just chose to put that one particular one, but there's too many others to list. Would fill up the plaque if we included all those. So anyway, I'm gonna miss you as being formally involved with activities, but want to thank you for all the service you've given this community. And so you've got your family here, which is great. And just like to present this plaque to you and then give you opportunity to share any thoughts that you might have.
Well, as you said, it's been seven years. I really didn't know that you could get out. I've been on this long in the traffic community. I asked you to join this, but I learned a lot in time. I knew nothing about traffic, except we had red lights. And I remember that. Now we have a full of cameras, taking beautiful pictures of you doing on the red light. With some days, we all would come down and so forth, but I think we're fine. I really enjoyed it. Like you said, I've been on other committees, budget committees and things like that. And I've learned a lot about how cities operate, waste management, all those kinds of things, which is very, very nice. I really enjoyed it. It became a long one. I think we moved here, I don't know, sixty-seven, fall of sixty-seven, came home from the great state of Georgia, and then had the Georgia, California, camping area, the east coast, eighteen ninety. And here we are, here with seventy-five people. My hometown, West Palm Beach, Florida, and everything crazy. And so we started by February, Floyd, grandson, granddaughter, sister, my daughter, and girl, Bill Bush. I have a surviving name, my good friend, Mary Anne, when I say I didn't know you folks were coming in here tonight. Well, good afternoon. But thanks again, Sarah, my mother. I really appreciate it. And all of you guys, you know, I get you every time in some instances. We were just friends through the years, and we may have differences over a day. I'm going to think safety is a real issue. The citizens will think is economics. It's kind of a bit, you know, year-round, you know. So good luck to you, Mary Anne, for those. You are asking children always for one time. Forty-two years I've been with them. Been a nice side of the neighborhood for a few years, but golfing after me days a week, and we went to Fridays, and work Tuesdays and Thursdays. It's been good. Thanks, Mary Anne. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you. You know, it's individuals like Bob that make this place so work, and it's a real honor to recognize you tonight. And my goodness, your service to the Med Center goes back to its original opening. Then I presume that was, what, nineteen sixty-seven?
They opened up in July sixty-seven, and I came here in August. In fact, the first two, the seven and eight fours were just shelled in. They thought they'd never use it. We just used it as a supply store area for about six months. And we realized, hey, this place is getting kind of big. So they fixed it up and put patients up there. Now we have the children's hospital and all that. I've seen a lot of changes. All pretty good.
Yeah, it's terrific.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment, too. I, back in the early nineties, when I got on council shortly after the citizens passed the Hillside Initiative, which had, we discovered some uninspected, unanticipated consequences, and we needed to try to work those out. Bob came in, I think Wayne and some of us sat around this table here, spent a lot of time working out our differences and what we thought would be the right thing for the city, and which happens very seldom and probably should happen a lot more in California. We managed to take a better one back to the people and got it voted in that got rid of those unintended consequences. And Bob was a very big part of that, and I, that's where I really first got to know him, and I appreciated his input on that. Thanks, Bob.
I just want to echo also the praise we have for all your service. I got to know you while I worked on the Traffic Committee, and you're definitely one of the more outspoken members on the committee. And I can still recall to this day, and, you know, I was there for six years, how much you disliked the red light cameras and how much you kept emphasizing how people don't like them and the council needs to do something about it. Unfortunately, we're doing something about it kind of late, and we still have a little bit of ways to go. I still am going to try very hard to remove them before the contract expires, but we'll see how that goes. I really, I appreciate what you and Dr. Isav have done, because I think you're pioneers in our efforts to preserve the hills, but more importantly, make sure that citizens listen to the voters. I think the fact that both of you ran gave us, many of us, inspiration later on to give it a shot. And Dr. Riggsby and myself, extremely grateful to both of you, because I believe both of you were instrumental in getting both of us on the council, because you were frustrated with the decisions that were being made. I appreciate the fact that you were instrumental in helping us significantly with Measure V, which was the second initiative that you helped us. And I have a little funny story to say about you, and I hope you don't mind, but I can still remember, in fact, it was Election Day during Measure V where we were driving through town, making sure everything was moving along, and there was about two hours left before polls closed. And we ran into Kathy's sister, Carolyn, who had said that she ran into you and you were busy picking up the signs. You were such an eager beaver to clean up the town, you had started picking up the signs before the polls closed. And we ended up having to get all those signs back and place them back up, because we felt that we wanted to make sure that the people knew which measure to vote for. So I think that's just, it's a testament to how hard you worked and how eager you were to make sure the town was getting cleaned up early. I think that the fact that you worked so hard, and sometimes it's frustrating in government to get things changed, but I think it is your hard work on the Traffic Committee that got me inspired to do something more than just sit around and talk, but actually pass measures, put into office people who actually listen to the people rather than people who are more concerned about big profits and, you know, other issues. So I really appreciate everything you've done, and I continue, I hope that you continue to be involved. And feel free to come speak up, because the only way we know that we're doing a good job is to hear from you. And if we stop listening to you, then we will join you there and no longer hear it, because you have the power to kick us out. And I think you remind us often that we need to do our job, we need to do it better, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, Bob, it's been a pleasure to work with you on a lot of projects through the years. And I know the hillside is something we've all worked together on, going back, I guess, to the early nineties. And one of the things that you, I know you appreciate is the fact we do have most of the hills set aside now as open space. And that's taken, how many years? Went back to about ninety-two.
Five years, yeah.
Yeah. It's been a long, long effort. And I hope, I hope you stay involved in the community. I reflect my colleagues' thoughts. It's great to have you here. And I trust you and your good wife are not moving away. You're just playing more golf?
Yeah, we've got a state right here.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Again, thanks so much on behalf of the community, on behalf of the City Council, and all that you have done in this community. And so glad to hear you're not moving away, and so glad to hear, hopefully, still running to you in the halls of the hospital. You're welcome to stick around, but on the other hand, don't feel bad to leave. I'm sure you probably have better things to do. Good night. Item number two, we have a report from Historical Commission chairmanship related to the Loma Linda History Fair coming up. And this sounds exciting. And, you know, heard a lot about hundred-year celebrations around here, but you're talking about, what, two hundred years, huh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about this. We're very excited on the Historical Commission, because we believe that this valley was named San Bernardino at a location that's inside of Loma Linda now, along Mission Road. It happened May twenty, eighteen ten. And so this year, we're making some changes in our schedule. As you know, for the last six years, we've held a Loma Linda History Fair. It's traditionally been in the senior center, although thanks to Chief Bender and his staff, we were able to use the fire station last year, and that was fantastic. We had a great turnout and wonderful things. But we're making some changes this year. However, before we get to that, there's something I've got to get out of the way. I've been listening to people complain about skunks in Loma Linda for the last couple of years. And I think there's something far more serious in the making. This little guy came to my house, and Councilman Riggsby isn't here yet to thank personally for leading the pig to my yard. He'd been following it in his car for a couple of blocks, as well as some of our city employees. And they came to my door that morning and said, we don't want to alarm you, but there's a wild boar in your backyard. And can we please close your gate and keep it in your backyard? And I foolishly said it would be all right. And that was a mistake. My wife has reminded me of what a mistake that was several times since then. But we did manage to keep it off the street. This is the only picture I took of the boar from inside the house. And once he hit our sliding glass door, with me standing just inside the door, I realized it was time to get outside and be out there with the sheriff's deputies and the animal control people. This is him going after the same door again. He hit it about six times, and it's a miracle that it didn't shatter. That's with a tranquilizer dart. I brought a copy of that picture with me. It shows his tusks, which were not huge, but he was definitely intimidating. I was thinking, maybe we could get some way to get this onto the city seal somehow. We've had a snake on there for a long time. But it was an exciting day for our family and our quiet street in Loma Linda that never has any action. He nosed around and redirected a lot of our Christmas decorations and furniture in the backyard. And of course, we had the news van there all day and the news helicopter there for a couple of hours. And my wife was so grateful that when he was gone, she was willing to pose with some of the guys who'd helped bring him to us. So apparently, he did a lot of harassing of Loma Linda before he got cooped up in our backyard. But thankfully, with the help of animal control from San Bernardino, our contracted animal control people, they tranquilized him and got him taken away.
Anybody determine where he came from?
The word is from somewhere way east in San Timoteo Canyon area, toward the Beaumont Banning area. There's a population there. But how he got this far west, and apparently came from the west side of town, by the cemetery, Oakwood, and down Barton Road, and Campus Street, Lawton. He pretty much toured the whole upper side of Loma Linda, all of the south side, and never did find his way back to the hills where he belonged. But it was, it was an interesting day. I don't want to repeat that one. Well, let me talk to you seriously about our bicentennial celebration. Traditionally, the last six years, our history fair, of course, we've invited everybody to come, but this is a bicentennial year, and those don't come around very often. None of us will probably be around in another hundred years to celebrate. So Mr. Haddad has offered to us the use of his Heritage Plaza, which is at the corner of California and Barton, and that's where a luncheon will be served, and also the free part of the fair will take place with displays and entertainment. And then we're going to use the new Heritage Park on Mission Road for a tea at the fair for the whole afternoon. So this is going to pretty much go on all afternoon on Sunday, May sixteen. That was the closest weekend day that we could get to May twenty, which is the actual celebration. And we hope that you'll put that in your calendar and plan to be there. You would be our honored guests, and we hope that you can come for any or all of it. Luncheon program from twelve fifteen to two fifteen, and we have a number of speakers already lined up and some others considering it. That's the location for the dinner, the courtyard of the building that looks like the first Loma Linda Hospital, not to be confused with Sanitarium, but the building that was built in the nineteen thirties in the middle of what is now the university campus. And so Mr. Haddad agreed to design some of his buildings to look like historic Loma Linda buildings. So it seems like a good time to take advantage of that building that's not fully occupied yet, and he's offered it to us for the purpose of the fair. That one looks like the nineteen oh five Mission School Building, which we no longer have intact, but still quite a few pictures of it. And so some of the events may be held there as well. We have some featured speakers to cover every era of our local history, from the Native American period through the Spanish Mission period, the Mexican Rancho period, the Mormon settlement period, the American settlements, the rise of the citrus industry, and the Seventh Day Adventist Sanitarium period. And then a short panel discussion to close that program. People will actually be buying tickets for that luncheon and to hear those speakers. And that will be inside the patio and inside some of those lower buildings. And then the history fair will be open the rest of the day for anyone in the community, completely free, similar to what we've had. But we are asking our local history organizations, the societies from around the valley to come and participate as well. And this is what our fair looked like a couple of years ago when it was in the senior center. We have a good turnout. We get a lot of different ages of people. We market it heavily to students, elementary school, middle and high school students, and we get a lot of families out, as well as older people who are interested in history as well. Tea in the Heritage Park, we really want to show off our new park. Our commission congratulated Mr. Ty Pet last night for his amazing efforts to get a park built where there was nothing a couple of years ago. And we've got a couple of our historic buildings on site now, and show you some pictures of those in a bit. But we anticipate having free shuttles back and forth from the fair on California Street to the park, where they'll have some refreshments. The Latter Day Saints have agreed to put on some reenactments and have some realia there, possibly a covered wagon or other things to illustrate their part of local history. We hope to have a Native American historical presentation there, and unveiling of future Heritage Park plans, because the park is not finished. It's just begun, but it really is starting to look like a park now. And then an unveiling of the replacement Wachama Rancheria plaque. That's the park as it looked last week with wrought iron fencing in place and the parking lot area, the beginnings of the landscape plan, the first stage are already starting. And it's really starting to look like something that reflects the heritage of this community. And so that will be the site of the tea in the Heritage Park. Why this is so important to do now is that we have California Landmark Number Ninety-Five in our town. That's the Wachama Rancheria, which was really established in eighteen nineteen, but the place was named San Bernardino in eighteen ten. And since nineteen thirty-two, we've had that plaque on Mission Road. Well, three and a half years ago, it was stolen for salvage purposes, apparently. Someone wanted the brass in it or the bronze. And we feel that two thousand ten is an excellent time to commemorate not only the bicentennial of the naming of this valley, we believe at that location, but also to replace the plaque that's been gone for a while. And so we want to invite our friends and neighbors there for a new unveiling of replacement plaque. That's what it looks like right now. We have the base, a few hundred feet from our park, really under the Edison easement in a place where the only people who could ever have found it were people who were trying to steal the metal in it. And that's kind of a shame how the community built up around it. It didn't have a special place, and it should as a California landmark. But the plaque, this is some of the text from the plaque, does commemorate May twenty, eighteen ten, and the development of the first mission on Mission Road, which began in eighteen nineteen. The digging of the Sanha, or as our Redlands neighbors call it, the Sankey, to bring water from Mill Creek all the way down here through Mentone, Greenspot, Redlands, into our community. And that was the water source for the citrus industry that followed. And so that's a very significant plaque in California history, and it's our hope to have it replaced by the time of the fair. It was placed by the Arrowhead Chapter, the Daughters of the American Revolution, in nineteen thirty-two. That's a long time for a plaque to stay in a place and then be lost. And we don't want that to be lost forever. So our intention is to replace it with a non semi-precious metal plaque, probably cast resin, something that will not be as attractive or as expensive if somebody did decide to deface it or remove it. But we don't want to put exactly the same thing there and then have it disappear again. But we want to put it in a conspicuous and respectable place in the Heritage Park where it can take its place among the other California landmarks. So what am I asking for you tonight? Certainly support us with your goodwill and encouragement. As a commission, we serve at your request. We're appointed by you. So we would love to have your support of the bicentennial of the fair. We're going to need some funding for this. Our fair has never cost the city very much money, if at all, because everything is donated, the time, the materials. But this one is going to be a bit more expensive with the luncheon, with all of the hospitality things that we're planning. We will be seeking a grant from the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, because they're interested in the community's history. But we may be coming to the City Council, once our budget is finalized, asking for a little bit of help. We won't have a huge budget, but we do need to replace this plaque, and we may be coming to ask for some help with that. And please, as you get out into the other governmental agencies that you work with, get the news out. Let them know that May sixteen is an important day in Loma Linda, and invite them to come. And continue to support our Heritage Park and the overlay district, the Mission Historic District, because it's an important part. It's extremely important to historians in this valley and in California. And we're so delighted with what's already happened with the Heritage Park. We want it to continue. We want that to be a destination in Loma Linda where a lot of events can take place in years to come.
Very exciting hearing summary of a brief synopsis of the history, and then your plans for the event on May sixteenth. We'll have to make sure we keep advertising that and get it on our website. I think, you know, obviously, we can't give you an exact amount, but I think can speak for the whole council, have our unqualified support, and we'll figure out some way to help out financially. Obviously, times are tough, and we're not going to have the gold-plated plaque. And like you wisely said, probably better not, too. But we'll, we're going to have to figure out a way, and we'll make this work. So that's exciting.
Thank you.
Just one quick question. I know that the city of San Bernardino is planning a big celebration this year as well.
Pretty much all year. Every event in San Bernardino is a bicentennial event.
Since, literally, it seems that the beginnings happened right there within our town. Are they going to, are they planning anything over here, any kind of a meeting?
Well, we've been trying to interface with Well, we've been trying to interface with, with the city department, the mayor's office in San Bernardino. They've chosen to go a little bit different direction. They're not calling theirs a bicentennial of the valley, of the San Bernardino Valley. It was recommended to them that they do it, but they've chosen to make it a city event, and not to exclude anyone, but, but their events are about the city of San Bernardino. We could debate exactly what happened in 1810, where exactly it happened. They've got a, a huge bicentennial celebration. We're doing our one little thing because it's more appropriate for our budget and, and our community. We don't want to take anything away from their celebration. We encourage people to support the programs that they do. Fortunately, they're not, they're not doing anything really historically related on this day. They are doing some plaque unveilings on May 20, and they're doing it at a site that they believe was a, a first contact place, which is about where Inland Center is in San Bernardino. We stick with the traditional lore of the Mission Road pioneers who believed that because the mission was established there nine years later, that that really was the site of the original contact between Franciscan fathers, Spanish soldiers, and the Wachama Indians who were Surrano, Kewee people. So I think we're well within our historical evidence to certainly say that it is a bicentennial of the whole valley, because the whole place was named San Bernardino, not necessarily a city established on that day. So we're inviting all of them to come too. Maybe not the whole city, but representatives. We would love to have their participation as well.
Well, thanks again. Appreciate all your work on this. Sounds very exciting, and look forward to hearing more and working in that direction for this event.
Thank you. We'll be back when we have more specifics about our needs too, but thank you for your support. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rigsby. You weren't here when I mentioned that you'd been gently leading the wild boar into our yard, but thank you for watching out for the community. You were there with your car, following it.
How did it end up in your yard, of all the yards in this whole town?
I left my gate open. What more can I say?
He had a party at the 94, and he had a bunch of little kids that dropped food.
Oh, yeah. Hansel and Gretel, it was a, it was a trail of crumbs. Again, my mistake. I should have cleaned up better and closed the gate. We would have, it would have been someone else's yard.
Just to follow up on the wild boar story, I got a phone call the next ladies, or next day from a lady in Long Beach, of all places. She identified herself, and she said she was no longer going to come and shop in Loma Linda because we ended up having to euthanize the pig instead of saving it. Have a hard time believing she shops here regularly, but I guess it's possible. But anyway, I know animal control did, did their best, and city staff with their assistance, and yeah, I think we'd all love to have some other way, but it probably was the wisest under the circumstances. Has anybody ever heard of wild boar in Loma Linda all the years before? I never had.
There, there's some tales of a little herd out in the canyon, and sometimes in the hills. So there's a lot of things in our hills.
Well, I've, I've been told that there is somebody up in the canyon who actually raises these things, and you can come there and hunt them on their property. It's somebody told me that it's where.
Not in our hills, though.
No, no, but up.
Way up the canyon. Yeah, that's, that's a story that has been out there.
I've heard that story, so I haven't been up there hunting.
Well, life's always exciting, something new and different. Item number five, no, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, trying to rush here. Item number three, we have a public hearing related to our fall weed abatement activities, and always exciting, so if we could have staff report on that, that'd be great.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. As you're aware, the city has a semi-annual weed abatement program. We've just wrapped up the fall segment of this program, and I'm standing before you again to ask for your guidance and your decision-making to adopt the resolution that establishes the liens on the properties. In your package, you have a list of 14 properties that have not paid the, for the services that the city provided on their, on their parcels to abate the weeds, and I'd like to, or ask that you would pass the resolution to place a lien on those properties, but let me briefly go over with you just the, the procedures that we follow every year, just to make sure that everybody has a, an opportunity, and we follow the rules very strictly. The fall weed abatement program starts on August 24, when we can do the first inspections. Then by, on September 10, notices are sent out to abate the, the properties that need them. By September 30, we do a second inspection from, and if, if they aren't done, then on October 1 through November 22, as you see, the city has a contractor that goes by all of the properties and parcels and abates the weeds. By December 3, if, if they have not done so previously, the invoices are sent to the property owners of what properties were abated. This year, the property, or the contractor abated 25 parcels, and as of this afternoon at 3:00 PM, there were still 14 unpaid costs for the abatement procedures on that, on 14 parcels. So once again, just asking for your guidance and your decision on this to place these unpaid parcels into lien.
Appreciate your report. Makes it easy. Thank both, James here for your work on, on this item and bringing this together for us, so any questions for?
I'd just like to say, it's, it's nice to see a short list, and the, and the values aren't that high as we've seen some. A lot longer than what we figured values in the past.
I was going to echo that.
This is progress.
Yep. Shorter the better. That's great.
I just had a couple of questions. I noticed that there were two lists, and the second one's more updated ones, which means that the, the people who are on the first list have already basically paid up, correct? Is that why they were eliminated, and they're not on the second list?
Yeah, the list that you, that you have of 14 parcels are the ones that have not been paid.
Okay. And the other question I had, from your experience, once you, the owners are notified that there's now liens on their properties because they failed to pay these up, do you find that soon after that, they come and eventually pay to try to remove the lien?
That I'm going to refer to my associate, Jim.
Generally, once, once we get the resolution to place these parcels as an assessment against the property, that only happens, it doesn't happen immediately. We do that once a year. We do weed abatement twice a year, but we send the assessments to the county once a year, and that's every August. And so it's kind of, it's kind of a delay for the property owners. Like, right now, these liens would probably show up on their next, next fall, September, I think, on their tax, tax bill in September, I believe.
So now do you notify?
As far as paying it, they even have a couple more weeks even after today to come in and pay it technically, and so we, we would still accept payments for the next couple of weeks and before we kind of close the books on it.
So do they get notified now that we've passed the resolution thereby placing these liens on the properties?
No, there's no other notice.
So the only thing they notice is that they happen to do?
The notice is on the, the invoice is also a notice of hearing explaining that this is what will happen tonight if they don't pay.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for fire marshal or fire department with their report? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. I would like to formally open the public hearing and give anyone from the public an opportunity to address the council on this item if you would choose to do that. I don't have any slips. Are there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look for direction and/or further action from the council.
Been moved and seconded.
Been moved and seconded with the updated list of properties, as was mentioned, updated as of today, it looks like, and fees assessed as listed. Been moved and seconded for this item with weed abatement findings. Any other comments, questions? If not, all in favor of this action, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed carries unanimously. Thanks again. Keep up the good work, and hopefully next year even be shorter. All right, consent calendar, we have, is there any items anyone wants to pull or have any questions? Been moved and seconded.
I would just like to open the redevelopment agency so we can consider item number one at the same time as your item number nine.
Sounds good to me, so we are jointly acting on item number nine on the consent calendar with redevelopment agency, if that's acceptable to all. Any other questions or comments on any items? If not, any opposed to accepting the consent calendar? Seeing none opposed, it carries unanimously. Any old business? Boy, moving so fast, don't know what to do here. New business? Not hearing a whole lot of new business. Reports of councilmen, I'm sure there must be one or two comments. So anyone with reports? Councilmember?
I just briefly wanted to just let everyone know that we had a budget committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, and Jarb and Deanna went over our mid-year budget. We don't have the numbers in yet, but so far, we're, we're on track, and we're doing great. We're projecting to have our revenues slightly above what we projected and our expenses slightly below, so those are two positive things, and we want to thank everybody, especially the city staff who worked hard on making sure that expenses are low. For those of you in the audience who may be watching on TV, just remember that if you decide to shop or spend money, try to do it in Loma Linda. We benefit from it more than anyone else. I wasn't able to attend, but there was a ribbon cutting for the remodeling of the Loma Linda Market. Even though we don't necessarily get any sales money from groceries, Loma Linda Market does have a campus store where they have cell computers, which are fairly high-expensive items, so instead of going to Victoria Gardens to get an Apple computer, just remember, we've got an Apple store right here in town, so just want to remind everybody of that. So thank you.
I had the privilege last night of moving two residents in Loma Linda from one part of town to the other. My neighbor had two big fat opossums living in her garage, and came over and wanted to know if I'd help, so I put my gloves on, picked them up, and took them out to the orange orchard, and I trust that they're living happily over there tonight. Our zoo's getting larger.
Any other wild animal stories or reports here?
I've got some. I always tell them I'm a liar.
Those are ubiquitous, that's for sure. Any other reports, councilman? If not, many reports of officers. Very good. Gives me pleasure to adjourn this meeting at 7:44.
Redevelopment Agency is back. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Are there any comments from the community on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we've dispensed with item number one, so we're adjourned. Thank you.